This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, the time is 6:02. Call to order, the regularly scheduled local school committee meeting for the town of Southampton, Wednesday, April 13, 2022. All five members of the committee are present, as well as superintendent and building principal, and several members within the audience. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have draft minutes of March 30, 2022, for consideration. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as is.
Sorry, I have a few edits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? That's where the modifications come in.
Edits, okay. Under Guess, I think it's Francine Tishman, right? And under Item 3, Budget, it doesn't say who seconded the motion. And same comments for under 4, adjourn. We don't have anyone making the motion or seconding. And that looks good.
I don't think we have a record, we don't have a recording, so...
I believe I seconded it.
On both occasions?
I think I made both.
Well, you made, you made the motion to approve the budget.
Yeah.
Motion was seconded by Allison.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. And number 4, motion to adjourn, 7:02.
I think that was me, too.
Made by Austin and seconded by?
Yes, that was me, too.
By Allison.
We were fighting for it.
Whoever could get it out fastest, I think.
Okay. Any other modifications or adjustments? All in favor to accepting the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Public comment, period? Any member of the public that wishes to speak?
Well, I don't know that you can answer it, but Jennifer Johnson, Kids in Norris. I was looking at the agenda and it says you're thinking or kind of discuss putting the HVAC back to pre-COVID. Is there?
What does that mean?
Is there a reason for it? Like, if there's a better HVAC system in place now, wouldn't you want that to continue?
So to, I don't know that this will answer your question, but what we're going to discuss is that prior to COVID, the HVAC system ran as needed, as the thermostats said, call for cold air, hot air, whatever it would run. Once COVID started, we flipped the switch and left them constantly on. As a result, that's eaten up an additional $20,000 to $30,000 of our budget.
Gotcha.
So now that we're entering the spring, and windows can be open, the question is, do we allow that to not run 24/7?
Not what I thought when I read that, so, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment, closed. Warrants are all set, announcements and correspondence. I don't believe we have anything. Do you want to accept? We did receive a communication at quarter to 5 this afternoon where Ms. Colley, who is the president of the STA, wrote to us apologizing for not being able to attend tonight, but did share her thoughts, which I'll just quickly read. "Jen, I just wanted to follow up after my last email. This is regarding the HVAC system. The STA, Southampton Teachers' Association, is in full support of anything that will help our impending budget crisis. If that means adjusting how the HVAC runs, we are in full support. Our only concern is that we feel it should remain in full capacity during our contractual work hours when staff and students are in the building. We also hope that it would be considered to be run at full capacity during off times, but when the building would be used heavily, such as the upcoming Spring Craft Fair or other various events that would take place in the future: concerts, talent shows, open house, conferences, et cetera. Also, the STA is excited to have visitors once again in the building, assuming visitors follow any COVID protocols that are currently in place. We do have some reservations about visitors attending lunch during eating times and assume there will be good discussions surrounding this topic. We are happy at the possibility of having classroom volunteers to help build our parent-teaching community even stronger. Signed, Elizabeth Colley." Okay. Next on our agenda is vote to approve final FY '23 budget.
So I have a little note from Bobby. Bobby's out because her mother passed away last week. So the final budget documents aren't ready yet. The only thing that has to still be figured out is where the ESR money will be spent on. So we need to just schedule a meeting. It'll just take a half an hour for us to meet with Bobby to do that. So after that, we should have that, so.
Would it your belief that you'll be able to find non-salary-related line items?
Yeah, absolutely.
That the ESR money can be spent on that won't trigger the additional 9% penalty?
Yeah.
And for clarification for the committee, if you use federal money on any salary line items, you have to allocate an additional 9%. So you have to do 109% of whatever that line item is. So in order to use the 163, we want to use it like on utilities and curriculum material, things of that nature.
Does that create any problems for budgeting for next year or the year after? If we take line items, for example, let's say we zeroed out electricity, just utilities and maintenance would probably cover the vast majority of that money, then move that money into the salary line so that we're not going to, I assume that's what you're going to do. Does that have any, do you know, does that have any impact on the budgeting for the following years?
Well, I think it will, because once ESR money is driven out, that's going to be huge as it is. So yeah, there's definitely going to be issues down the road. Thanks for the question.
Not where I was going with that, but, yeah.
So we took a vote on the budget, which I honestly, I thought was our final vote, but I know procedurally, we take a vote, and then we have to take a second vote or the final vote. And the final vote can be anywhere from that level down. We can't go any higher. And the number that we reported out is what also got reported to Finance Committee last week, where Dr. Bonneville presented the argument for. So I don't know if this is just procedural-wise perfunctory and we should just take the vote.
Yeah, you already did.
Finalize the number.
Yeah, you already did that last time. But if you want to finalize the number, it is $5,040,541, which is an increase of 3.58% to the budget, which is $174,315. And that includes hoping that the ARPA covers the neurodiversity program and the SRR3 funds that we have left, $163,000, will use elsewhere to offset the costs.
Okay, so we entertain a motion to accept these final numbers and approve the final budget pending any adjustments to the ESR fund allocations.
Identification of the ESR allocations. All right, so the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion made and seconded on the floor to approve the $5.04 million budget, 3.85% increase year over year, with the understanding that the $163,000 from SRR funds will be identified at a future date, but will not impact salaries. Discussion?
Was it 3.58 or 3.85?
3.58.
Which one? 58?
58 is what I presented.
3.58.
That's in Bobby's own handwriting.
The 5-0-4-0 makes sense.
There's an agenda item lower down, the update from the Finance Committee. Is it relevant to?
It's not going to impact this vote.
Okay.
Question on that, too, is if the ARPA money is not allocated, though I have all the faith in the world that our colleagues in the Select Board.
Say that again.
I have all the faith in the world that our colleagues in the Select Board will understand that the importance of this program regarding the distribution of ARPA funds, but should said ARPA funds not be distributed for such purpose, and the budget otherwise passes, are we under any obligation to institute this program, or can the administration use the budget as they see fit as approved?
Well, the administration would be prohibited from hiring the two additional staff members because the funding source would not exist.
Right, we'd have that final bottom-line number to work with.
But if we, okay.
So if we can make that program work by being creative to some degree.
Well, I would assume that program wouldn't exist if the ARPA funds are not allowed. However, if the ARPA funds aren't allowed, we don't lose, the budget is still okay the way it is, correct?
It has to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's...
Other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We have quarterly reports. I think we're going to pass on that in Bobby's absence. We do have discussion on transportation bid. There is a document in your packet under New Biz, yep, New Business. School bus transportation bid contract was for three years, period, with an option for two additional years. The administration did put that out to bid. There was only one bid received from the current provider. It was a 20% increase. It is believed that this is most likely due to recent fuel price increases. The recommendation from administration, which is to either A, enter into negotiations to have price reduced as per mass procurement law, B, reject the bid and seek a rebid, school bus transportation contract for a one-year period. Our school bus transportation bid specifications allows the following: The awarding authorities are Hampshire Regional School Committee, Chester-Goshen Regional School Committee, the school committees of Southampton, West Hampton, Williamsburg, which reserve the right to make no award, to reject any or all bids, to call for rebids if necessary, and to waive any informality in the bidding procedures. According to mass procurement law, negotiating a lower price when using an IFB, you may negotiate the price of a contract downward with the responsive and responsible bidder offering the lowest price. While you may negotiate a favorable price, you may not negotiate any change to the purchase description, quantity, quality, or scope of service, or contract terms and conditions. In English, I think what that means is that, once again, we have a monopoly bid where there was a sole response, the incumbent, with a 20% increase. Whether or not we think that 20% is fair is outside the issue at the moment. We can either attempt to negotiate with them, which is a three-year contract with two additional years attached onto it for a lower price, or reject the whole thing and go out and seek a one-year period and see if we have any additional respondents and/or a different bid from the incumbent.
So it's asking for a one-year from someone else, not from them?
Not from them, too.
Well, we could. We would do a new bid, and they would be free to respond to it.
So the translation would be, we're either banking on that the price of fuel is going to only go higher, so we negotiate a three-year contract now and try to get as low as we can, or we're betting the prices are going to go lower, ask for a one-year contract, and redo it again in a year. That's, I mean, that's the, that's the short version.
Right.
But if you rebid for the year?
No, as liaison from the board of selectmen, you can participate in discussions, but you cannot participate once a vote is called for.
My question is, what percentage of the contract is based on the cost of the fuel? Is it 40%? 40%? And then I'm trying to negotiate down once the cost of fuel goes down, having contingency in that contract.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can answer that. And I know the increased fuel prices was one reason, as well as to retain high-quality bus drivers, they've had to increase their salaries and offer additional professional development for them as well. So Bobby is looking to seek your approval for her to negotiate on your...
Now, does this go to all the different school committees, and everybody has to decide the same outcome, or?
So far, everybody has.
Okay. What if one person, what if one group doesn't do the same thing? Because we all use the same transportation, right?
Yeah, that's a good question. But in previous years, though, you've used three different bus companies for the whole district. Bobby told me that at last night's meeting. Or we start carpooling?
Yeah.
Well, there is the possibility that, because this is a three-year contract, that they put in for the 20%, 20% increase because it's over a three-year period. And if we were to, and we also asked for this at the height of the price increase. I mean, as of today, since the contract went out, the price of regular fuel has dropped by 30 cents. I have no idea what the price of diesel has done.
But I bet, I mean, salaries have just gone up, so fuel plus the salary increases.
Right. So I would, right. For data points, our budget allows for a 5% increase. Anything above that, and we're going to have to find cuts, presumably. And we don't, we don't have that much fat.
So didn't most other school committees go with option B, looking at this as being 15% over a 5% increase?
No, they're going with A, to negotiate a lower price.
Negotiate a lower price, okay. So that, so they can attempt that, and then if it fails, we still have to decide. So attempt to negotiate?
Right, and she would always come back to the table and let you know how those discussions are going. So you'd be informed throughout the process.
When's the, when does the current contract expire? June 30?
That's my understanding. I'm not positive.
That's what I would say.
I would think so as well.
And we're voting, our vote only impacts Norris. There would be a separate vote at Hampshire Regional on the Southampton impact, correct?
Didn't they do, didn't we do that?
I mean, it may have already happened, but this committee is not controlling what happens.
Correct.
For grade 7 through 12 of Southampton students.
Correct, that's their own school committee.
We're only talking about the Norris impact. Okay.
Transportation comes out of the town's budget, correct?
Couldn't you have greater buying power with the five districts all trying to negotiate the lower contracted price?
I would just, I would just, to counter that point, one would think so, right? But traditionally, busing, public busing contracts in the state of Massachusetts are monopolies, and it's very rare that you ever receive a competitive bid. They somehow talk amongst each other and decide who's going to bid on what, and then nobody else responds. And it's, and it's one of the gray areas that's still allowed in Massachusetts. So, I mean, my, my take on it, originally, I was going to go with, I was going to vote for B, reject the bid. Let's go with a one-year. We'll deal with this in a year when things stabilize. But understanding if the other committees have already voted for A, we should play nice with them and allow them to dictate our faith. I would just put a caveat on there and allow option A, provided that the final agreement does not exceed 5%, because that's all we have budgeted.
Right.
Is that your motion?
Well, I can't make the motion as chair.
All right, so I'll make that motion.
So the motion is to enter into negoti, to authorize our business administrator to enter into negotiations to have the price reduced as per mass procurement law, provided that the ultimate end result does not exceed 5%.
Yep.
That's the motion. It's seconded. Discussion?
So 5% is greater than 3 point, or 2.5 or 3.5, whatever the town gives us. Is the 5% out of the capital town budget, or is transportation isn't a school budget, it's the town?
Elementary school busing is a separate line item in the town budget.
Okay.
That is currently sitting at 5% in the proposed budget.
Well, just some also seen here. We had, I'm assuming, a special education transportation contract. Contract also comes out of a line item budget from the town as well?
Yeah, it's a separate contract, separate budget.
I understand that, but there's been a $72,000 decrease in that over year over year. So in theory, even if the contract went above the 5%, from the town budgeting side, the overall transportation expenses would not increase, even at 20%.
If you only look at those two line items, I will, I will, I'm sure this will come up later, possibly, if we, if time allows. I will tell you that currently, the city, the town is sitting in a deficit of $178,000. So 178 needs to get cut from current request, and if we use that argument, say, hey, we've already done this, don't touch us, we'll repeat what happened last year.
I understand. I'm not, I'm not saying that is the, all I'm saying, I'm not saying 20% is good. All I'm saying is that if we hit, let's say, 8%, because I understand 5% would be great, but I'm sure that bus con, bus salaries, I'm sure went up well over 5%. And I'm sure fuel costs, even if they plummet in the next six months, are going to be well above 5% over what we did the last time we bid this contract. You know, I think there's still, my point being is that I think overall, the school's transportation budget year over year will go down. So while I appreciate, you know, that the town's going to need to make cuts, we, and I think we get, it's not, not the end of the world, I think, from the transportation side.
So are you suggesting an amendment to the motion?
Nope, I'm just, just talking.
Making a comment.
I want to accept it.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? All right. And then I would just say, the last thing before I call for the vote, unless my comments spear discussion, is that nothing prevents the business administrator from coming back to us at a later date and saying, 6 is really the best I can do. We've authorized her to act under her own authority up to 5%. Anything above that, she would have to come back to the committee, at which point we'd be further down the budget process, and we may potentially have other avenues, but we're only greenlighting up to 5% at this time.
Yep.
Everyone good? Vote, uh, vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, we have four first readings. Just as a reminder, we cannot enact policy on a first reading. We have to wait for a second reading. First reading, so without objection, we'll take them up as a packet. First reading of policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. B, first reading of policy ACAB, sexual harassment definition and procedures. C, first reading of policy AC-R, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. D, first reading of IHBIB, policy for selection of participants in the integrated preschool program.
The reason I, these are, I'm sorry, the reason these are in the agenda, quarterly MASCE comes out with legal updates, and this was their suggestion. And when we pulled up all of the district policies, they're very old, 20 to 50 years old. And a lot of the language has changed, especially as far as the sexual harassment and the harassment. They give examples of it. They go into detail about what constitutes retaliation. And I really like how they talk about the investigative procedure. So last year, Title IX laws changed. So if there is a sexual harassment case, it's kind of problematic, because on one hand, you want administration to deal with it immediately, and any consequences should be swiftly handled. However, an investigation could take many weeks. So that's the snafu in that. But Kate is the investigator, and then we can decide who's going to be, no, Kate is the reporter, as far as the record-keeping. The assistant principal is usually the investigator, and you'd be the decision-maker. And then if it needed to be appealed, it would be to me. So it's very clearly identified in this, in these documents, which is all new.
So in the packet, the first one, non-discrimination on basis of sex, the updated version references file ACA, which matches our agenda. But the yellow piece of paper right behind it says previous policy, references file AC. So is, I'm assuming ACA is replacing AC?
Yeah, I had a note.
The other ones match up.
Oh, yeah, file, let's see, there was no file ACA in the current policy, so file AC is listed as file AC-R.
Oh.
So AC is to AC, AC is, ACR? Well, it looks like AC is AC. It looks like we don't have an old policy for ACA.
Uh, it's, for ACA, it's almost exactly the same, except we put in the address. It's exactly the same. So that hasn't changed at all.
All right. So in our packet, if we have a policy, yellow is the old?
Correct.
And white is, is the, okay, all right. Okay. Any discussion on those four policies? Does the administration feel that there's any reason why we should bypass procedure and vote on them immediately? Or can we, can we allow the two, the public notice and vote on the next one?
Yeah, whatever you'd like to do is fine.
Okay.
The Regional did a first read, so they're doing a second read as well, so.
Yeah.
We don't need to.
So do we do a motion for?
I think we just accepted its first read, and we placed it on the agenda for second read with the anticipation of voting on it.
Yep.
And then the whole purpose is, this now gives the public 30 days to review and weigh in and reach out, if any adjustments, before we enact it. Okay? Item E, under New Business, Review of Current Bus Policy, which is file EEAC. I think, did we kind of already cover this? This is about the bidding procurement?
Yeah.
The busing administrator will have authority? Actually, I'm not sure, because this talks about the business administrator having the authority to set routes?
Yeah, this isn't over negotiation. It's like administration of the bus contract.
Uh, EEAC, let me see something. I thought, Austin, that you had wanted to talk about walkers and riders, which is EEAC. I think you mentioned that last meeting.
I think we were talking about the miles, right?
Right.
That we were going to change?
Yeah, we're going back to the old way, the current way of deciding who's included and eligible for the bus transportation.
So currently, we are at a mile and a quarter?
No, a mile or a half a mile. We're down, I want to say we're at a half a mile.
Half a mile. And prior to the pandemic, we were at across the street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. So I just remember back to the last meeting, and I think it was during the budget, and the anticipation that the increase, there was going to be an increase in pricing that we may not be able to afford. Could we look at reducing, if we expanded, if we reduce the area coverage from across the street back to, up to the maximum of the two-mile radius, could we reduce the number of buses needed for Norris? And the short answer was possibly, but the longer answer was, we'd still have to pay for the same number of buses up at Regional. So it really, there was not a financial benefit to doing that.
I do feel like if we open it, like, to zero miles again, that that overcrowds a couple of the buses. Not all of them, but some of them even now are pretty full. I don't know. I think a half mile to a mile is okay, but if you're living across the street, it really...
Well, because we already reviewed the appeal process, like, two years ago, or whatever that was. Spent a lot of meetings on it.
We did.
So we have that avenue, if there are issues under whatever radius we were to set. I think it says that in the policy, too.
Right. Traditionally, when, when does administration notify folks whether or not they're eligible for busing for the next year? Is that August, September, July?
We, you know, it didn't change for so long. And then all of a sudden, I think it was because of COVID, it was, it was changing. So normally, in the summertime, we come up with the bus routes and...
You just got an email of the bus routes.
Yeah, I mean, if the school committee decided in April or May to change the bus policy to .5 or 1, or charge people, or whatever, like we have done, you know, in the past, we would send a letter out to all the parents at the end of the school year, giving them a heads-up that that would happen. But normally, you know, if you're over a half a mile, you find out what your bus route is, regardless of whether you're taking the bus or not. I think they plug everybody in that lives a half a mile and beyond. think they plug everybody in that lives a half a mile and beyond, and you find out what the bus route is a few weeks before school starts.
Okay.
Should we post it right on their website?
Yep, and it goes on website.
Have students ever paid for busing if they live?
One year.
Yep.
Yeah, Bobby said it didn't go very well.
Well, it's also a, an administrative nightmare of who collects the money and makes sure everybody paid.
Yeah, and you have to have, you know, financial hardship, appeal.
Right. And we do charge school of choice students, though, still, right?
But that's across the board?
Right.
That, that's all school of choice students, and, and they have to opt into the busing?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, let's work backwards. Does the committee want to take the month of July or the month of August off? Let's just go with the month of, you want July?
July off? You mean, like, because usually we'd meet in August before, yeah, I think July, probably. July off, and then we would probably meet before school in August.
So then, if we're not going to meet in July, that either means the second week...
Well, it doesn't have to be.
Well, no, well, no, no, that's fine. If, if, let's assume we're not going to meet in August, that's either the second week of June, of July, or the s...
No.
We're not going to meet in July.
Yeah, second week in June.
So it's either the second week of June or the second week of August. Do, do, so I guess what I would want to know, one of those meetings, we have to take, we have to take final action on this. The question is, when will, when will you feel comfortable with your enrollment numbers and where they are, to be able to get the data from the busing to determine whether or not buses are overloaded, based on, on the routes? Because it's got to happen at one of those meetings. So is it?
Our enrollment is not going to change drastically between now and then. I mean, we might get less than 10 kids, right?
So we could do it based on, for June, second week of June, so the end of...
But height, but the only one that's going to know whether the buses would be overcrowded or not would be Heidi at the bus company.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So two weeks prior to our meeting, somebody would have to give Heidi all the data, she would plug in the routes and say, okay, here's what they're going to look like, and I guess...
But shouldn't she just already know, like?
Yeah, so why?
Like, you're, like, we should just now say...
Right, it's pretty much what it is right now, so.
A mile or...
Do you have a motion you want to make?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion for students living at an outside .5 miles from school will qualify for a bus.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is that our current?
What?
Is that the current?
Yes.
I don't know where that's written down.
It's not written that way here.
I know, yeah, I know, I understand, yeah, it's something.
That's why.
Is anyone within the .5 mile radius upset that they don't get the bus?
Um, there are a couple appeals that have been approved.
So would, would you amend your motion that any appeal, any student that was priorly granted an appeal be grandfathered?
Yes.
So that takes her a gun road extension?
And any other groups?
So who's second?
Because we don't know that the appeals are on that road.
Right. So in essence, we are setting the busing for next school year at a half a mile radius and beyond. All appeals previously granted will still be permitted, and there's a current appeal process that can be utilized for new students. No other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Vote to approve school of choice numbers. Alisa?
So, we have offered 12 spots. I believe we've actually, well, we opened up school of choice in K 3 and 5. We've offered it to eight children in kindergarten, six of them being new students to Norris with no siblings, and two being siblings of already current students. And then, um, two spots in 3rd grade and two spots in 5th grade, for a total of 12, for next year.
And how many, how many school, how many school of choice children are exiting because of 6th grade going into 7th?
Um, six.
Okay.
And it's 5th grade, next year's 5th grade, not the current, huge 5th grade, okay.
I think that's why there's no, uh, 6th graders coming in on school of choice.
That's why I thought it was.
And I think the incoming grade 4 is the same story, right? It's another big one.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's one of the bigger classes.
Oh, the 3rd grade going to 4th grade?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're a bigger class.
A little bigger, yep.
So ju- just to clarify, do you really, past practice hasn't been that the committee has voted to...
I don't know where that came from.
Okay. So this is just a notification?
Yeah.
You're just, you're just notifying, right?
Thank you, yeah. Because if, you know, we advertise that we have spots open in K 3 and 5, but we don't say how many spots. So then, you know, we have 13 people apply for the spots that we know we have open, but we only have eight spots in kindergarten, or really six. Um, so we, we've already taken in those six by lottery. So the, the rest of them up to, that have applied by the deadline, go on a waitlist in order of how they were polled from the lottery. Uh, for 3rd and 5th grade, we didn't have more kids apply than we had spots. So we still have, so we only had two spots in 3rd grade and those were filled. We have more spots in 5th grade, the 4th going to 5th, because the four teachers in 5th grade. Well, actually, that's not true, because of the numbers in 4th grade going to 5th grade.
John, I'd feel better if you made a motion to accept those numbers formally, the 8th and kindergarten, 2nd and 3rd grade, and 2nd and 5th grade.
A motion to accept the numbers presented.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? So my only reservation is, is that a year ago, and this was under Superintendent Sullivan, it was a heated, lively discussion amongst this board and administration, um, where I would say the committee attempted to set policy by, by finiting down to specific numbers, and we, in essence, had our hands slapped by the then superintendent, that we are only allowed to opt in or opt out, and then it's an administrative choice.
I asked our attorney.
Okay.
She preferred the...
I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm just giving you the background.
Interesting, okay.
But.
Thank you.
Okay.
Was it the same attorney, or?
Probably the father-in-law.
Understood.
Yeah. So, that be...
Can I just say something, too?
Yes.
I think that it all, it feels like it, it depends on the budget, too. So, right now, it doesn't feel like we're going to cut teachers. So, it doesn't feel like we are, but we don't have an approved budget. You could come back to me in two weeks and say, you need to cut $174,000 from your budget, and then I have to, I might have to cut teachers, but I've already, we've already voted to accept the kids. So I think last year, because we were really all over the place with the budget, it didn't feel, I don't know what the law was, right, and we asked Michael Sullivan, and he said what he said. So that's what happened, but, uh, and that was the first time that you guys were really voting on the number of kids. So I think that's why it got heated, too, because how, how do we say we're going to take these kids, and then all of a sudden, I might have to cut a teacher? Well, now I won't be able to touch certain grade levels if we've already added kids. So I'm fine with whatever the law is, and we'll know that going forward.
So, are you okay with wording the motion to be, motion to accept the recommendation of administration of those numbers per grade?
Yes.
Who are approving their recommendation?
Yep.
Okay. Just, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. A vote to approve Smith College computer donation.
So Kim Flor had written us a letter, and that she's been in contact with Smith College, um, during the week of March 24th, and they had surplus computers to donate, and she went through the inventory. So according to our donation policy, we're asking for your approval of the following. Um, acceptance of five 21.5-inch iMac desktop computers, and these computers will replace older obsolete computers for the head custodian's office, the art room, music room, library, and one spare in case we need it for parts, as well as 67 13-inch MacBook laptops that will be put back in carts, so the lower grades can use them for MCAS keyboarding and/or any other application that runs better on the laptop, as opposed to the students' iPads that we have in grades kindergarten through 3. If we were to make, if we were to procure these devices new, the cost will be close to $57,000. Since they are a mix of older computers, make model year, it's hard to say, but her best guess, the current market value would be close to $25,000. So I, we need a formal, a, a formal vote to accept that, and then I write a lovely thank you card.
Uh, motion to accept the donation.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I think this is the fastest meeting we've ever had.
Yeah, and that, well, hold on, hold on.
Jeez, up, well, we're here till 10 o'clock tonight.
Wow, we're only halfway down.
I can't believe I said that. Yeah, I'm so sorry. Disregard.
Also, Dr. Bonneville, I think, um, when, when you express our thanks to Smith College, um, could you express our thanks also to Kim Flor on behalf of the committee?
Absolutely.
For reaching out and, yes. Oh, man.
School lunch price?
Next is vote to approve fiscal year '23, '24 school lunch prices. So historically, or at least for the past two years, we have suspended all, um, charges for the school lunch program, um, because the federal government has stepped up in response to COVID and covered all those costs. Is it anticipated that the government will continue that practice through '23, '24?
No.
Okay.
However, we are writing, um, super, local superintendents are writing our legislators to advocate on behalf of the state to ask for federal funding to do so. But as of right this second, no.
Okay. So can administration remind the committee what the prices were before COVID happened?
Yep. Um, according to my records, lunch was going to be $3.75, which includes milk. Uh, breakfast is at $2, and milk only is at $0.50.
All right, and Jacob would want me to ask, does that cover chocolate milk as well?
Yes.
I think it's the same price, right?
Oh, I, I might have that. The reduced price?
Yeah.
It would be going up from the $3.75, though.
Well, that's what we want to talk about, but the reduced is something less than $3.75?
Right.
Who?
What's the breakfast number?
Two, $2.
$2.
So, go ahead, Austin.
I was just going to make a motion to approve those, provided that...
She didn't say a price.
Yeah, that's what the price was last year.
Oh, okay.
Before COVID. So, um, if you can indulge me before we ask for a price.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the lunch program, is the cafeteria program currently in deficit? And does administration have a recommendation for pricing?
I know. I know that we just did get reimbursed with three big checks. I had this conversation with my cafeteria manager, Kathleen Kitty, the other day, where we're, we're right now pretty good, but I can't, I'm not, I can't base a vote on that. I don't have details. Um, I can prepare that for...
Is administration comfortable with maintaining those numbers and, and not reducing as a starting point, and then coming back if at a later time they feel the need to increase?
Yep. I think that she and I need to have a, a good discussion and figure out what the area schools are doing because of the rise and, and prices of everything right now. Does it make sense to increase the price of lunch because of that?
And the, and so the fund, the funds collected within these two programs, in a perfect world, are supposed to pay for all the commodity, right, all, all the food that comes in. The assistance, there's, there's a portion that's in our budget that we pay for.
Right, the monitors, I believe, are in our budget now.
Are in the budget. So this also is supposed to pay for the, the manager of the cafeteria and the other cook?
I believe so, yep.
What about the POS system?
That is separate. We've always looked for money in order to pay for the POS system.
Yeah. Okay. Which, just for reference, the, there was a capital request for, to update the purchase of, of the point-of-sale, uh, equipment within Norris, and, and that, um, did not rank high enough to be, to be considered or approved by the Capitol Committee, which I'll have an update later on about, which is why I'm bringing it up.
Make a motion now, Austin.
If you will. Okay. So, the recommendation was for the current numbers provisionally, unless there's a later recommendation. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So my motion will be to approve the current lunch pricing for the next year.
At $3.75?
Yeah.
Adjusted for, reduced appropriately?
Right.
And breakfast at $2?
Yes.
Could you say it?
Adjusted for reductions appropriately, and breakfast at $2. Um, and will entertain any further recommendations down the road, should they be needed?
And milk for $0.50.
And milk, including chocolate milk for $0.50.
A second.
There's a, motion made and seconded.
That specific enough?
It is, well, is. Did it get down to minutes?
Okay, great.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda, update from the Southampton Finance Committee on April 7th, 2022. And I guess that's more not from Finance Committee, but a, the results of the, uh, committee meeting that Norris went on. Um, I, I will give a, a brief overview, and then Dr. Bonneville can jump in if I miss anything, but, uh, we, I was there as a Finance Committee member. Dr. Bonneville represented Norris School, she provided them, and it was a joint session with the Select Board. There were thr- three members of the Select Board present, myself, Francine Fishman, and Chair Chris Fowler's. Um, Joy Piper, because of a relationship with the school, recused herself from any votes relating, retaining to the school, and Irene, or Irene Rainey, uh, was already scheduled for another meeting and unable to attend. But Dr. Bonneville presented the same overview that she presented to us with the statistics and the increased number, or what appeared to be the increased number of special education, and, um, the low number of ELL students that we have, that, that whole presentation to us. Um, I thought it, from where I sat, I thought it was warmly received and understood. Um, there were a few questions on our budget overall. They just wanted to understand what exactly were the adds. I thought it was very clear that our budget only works if we use 100% of the ESAR money and the ARPA requests are granted. That's what I recall from that meeting.
I thought it went very well.
Yeah. I do, too. Um, so that's where we stand as far as that goes. Um, does it come up again on the agenda? Yeah, and then under Chair's report, I can give a more update on the budget that happened last night. So, any questions on the finance piece? Nope? Okay. Next on the agenda is appoint a member to the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. Background on this is, as you know, we are collectively trying to get somewhere on a five district working agreement. We might make progress on that tonight. But that said, regardless of that, we need to do an evaluation. We are statutorily required. One of the key functions of the school committees is to provide an annual evaluation of the superintendent. You all know our unique situation with five different districts. It's five different school committees trying to come together. Um, the effort has always been, as long as I've been on, which granted has only been four years, to try to do a uniformed, um, evaluation. And the five chairs have met and discussed this, and are looking for each committee to appoint a single person to be the conduit for the committee to do the evaluation this year. Next year, the intent will be, this will be a duty and responsibility of whatever, whoever is elected vice chair of the committee. All right? So, but for this year, being short notice, we leave it wide open for any of our English majors that happen to be on the committee. Have a motion. Yeah, I do, I'm going to recognize over here first. So, I don't know if there's a motion to appoint somebody.
I'm going to make the motion to appoint, um, Julian.
Vice Chair. Oh!
No, I can't do that.
Yeah.
I can't even say me.
No, pick the vice chair.
All right, I'll make the motion to appoint Austin Rogers.
There is a motion made and seconded. Discussion?
How many meetings is it? How many meetings is it?
Well, that's a big question.
Depends on how fast you agree with the other four committees.
Well, I think the first meeting...
I can't agree or not agree, I'm a conduit, remember?
Go ahead.
I think the, uh, the first meeting will probably be in the first week of, um, May or the last weekend in April to come up with some kind of a questionnaire and to decide what questions will be asked and, and of whom will we be asking those questions through a Survey Monkey. So that's gonna be the first meeting.
And the intent is to have this finalized before the end of the school year?
Right.
So it's, it's a very short window.
Okay.
Perfect.
Hearing no objections. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Allison, good for you.
Thanks for volunteering, Austin.
You're welcome. I'm an enthusiastic volunteer for more meetings.
It's her first year, it should be average. Sorry.
Everything's meats. It's very thorough.
I'm not saying anything that I didn't say at the five chairs meeting. All right? Meets, meets expectations one year in. For humor, you should talk to the Williamsburg Chair on what he thinks entails a five, but that's a different story. Any other, any other business that needs to come up in our new business that was not listed on the agenda? Hearing none. Next, ongoing, vote to approve the five district agreement working group document. Now, as an update, I believe that the version before us now has been approved by the four other committees? Or is there still a committee hanging out there that hasn't approved it?
No, sorry. All the other committees have approved this already.
And since the last time we met, there was a addition, right?
The Peter Cleary amendments?
Yeah, part of it was under item seven A, I believe. It was in the budget transparency, so making sure that there's notification on a certain timetable.
Section seven, budget transparency subsection A. Prior to the presentation of any individual school budgets, the superintendent will provide central office budget to all individual school committee members. This will occur at least two weeks before the high school's preliminary budget. Side note, understanding that Hampshire Regional is the first committee to get it. Presentation hearing. No less than five calendar, calendar days later, the all district committee will hold a meeting with the business administrator to discuss the central office budget. All individual school committees will be notified of this meeting and permitted to attend. The all district committee will host a discussion on the budget and allow individual school committee members to ask questions about the budget to the business administrator in this meeting. In layman's terms, the business administrator will publicly release the budget fourteen days prior to the Hampshire Regional meeting. Five days after that, which is nine days before Hampshire Regional meets, there will be a meeting for all school committee members to address any questions or concerns they may have.
This is the John Lumber Clause.
Okay. I for one am fine with that paragraph.
I hope you are. It's your paragraph.
Are there, were there any other adjustments, Austin?
Uh, it was mostly negligible, the other ones. It was like punctuation and grammar stuff.
Okay.
What does the next one mean, B?
At the end of the school year, leftover funds from the central office budget revert to the Hampshire Regional excess and deficiency account. All district committee will be notified the amount of leftover funds going into excess and deficiency. So, that's currently, the first part happens already. Once money is appropriated to central office, there, there is not a legal mechanism to send that money back to the communities. So let's just say, in simple, in simple numbers, a hundred thousand dollars is left over. Technically speaking, based on our ratios, fifty-five thousand dollars of that belongs to the town of Southampton, but it can't come back. So it needs to go into a fund up there. And that has been happening. What hasn't been happening is there hasn't been a clear documented trail of notification of what that number is. And unless you, a committee member happens to ask that question in the next budget session, it shows up in one of those surplus funds. So again, it's just adding to transparency, what is the number? It's kind of like towns get certified their free cash. You then know what that number is for planning purposes. I, you know, if it was fifty-five thousand for Southampton, I would certainly be advocating to our voting members that that number needs to be addressed somehow in the next budget cycle. But that's my interpretation of that paragraph. It's just adding that layer, that the money already flows back, but when it does, written, written, I would feel, at least in Southampton's point of view, written communication should come down to the school committee, the town administrator, and the finance committee. Here it is, you know? Answer the question before they start asking it.
You know why that hasn't happened before, or that's just a?
I think...
procedural oversight?
I think it just hasn't.
Yeah. I think nobody really thought about it, and then when the question's raised, it's always nine months after the event happened. And the past is the past. I think at one point in time, probably when I was still in high school, it was a very secretive group, just before technology, and just didn't share that information.
True.
And to be clear, central office is not running at a hundred thousand dollar surplus.
No, I was very clear. I said, I'm just, I'm just throwing a number out there. It was easy to apply fifty-five percent to that.
Things get taken out of context. I just want to be very clear. I don't want to, you know, especially in budget cycles.
Yep. Other discussion on this?
I was gonna wait for the motion, but I personally am concerned that the budget allocation process is not included in this agreement. While I understand that there was a lot of work and discussion that went there and that ultimately there was an impasse on that and a decision was made to proceed with what agreements were able to be reached. I think the fact that there is been no agreement or any movement on the issue of cost allocation and voting allocation as far as a weighted vote goes is, is concerning. And while I understand it's being supposed to be tabled for another day for a further discussion down the road, I think whenever you pull out something that is unagreed to and say, we'll deal with this later, it is basically a invitation to never actually deal with it. And that, there is no, without having all the agreed upon stuff as the leverage to get something done, there is no, there is no leverage, there is no, there's no pressure to get the unagreed stuff resolved. So, I have an issue with that. So I don't, uh, and while I appreciate all the work that went into that, all the amendments that went into this, the amount of time that all the volunteers from five districts worked on this, and that it does address a much-needed process of superintendent hiring and evaluation processes, I do have that concern that the financial aspects and the voting aspects, while saved for another day, could ultimately end up disadvantageous to Southampton seeing as we do pay fifty-five cents on the dollar for the regional.
Yeah. So, just because someone will say this, not that I, I agree with you, but others might point to section nine, which says every two years, this agreement will be reviewed by local school committees and all districts committee with the intention of improving it and thereby improving the group's effectiveness. So it will be reviewed, but again, it doesn't address the impetus to change anything because it's not, there's no pressure behind it to necessitate the changes. So I share the same reservations because it really should be, you know, a representative vote. I don't use the term weighted vote anymore, I use representative vote, which they said was semantics, but I think it's important because the vote should represent the population, otherwise it's less democratic, so.
And I agree with that. And that's, and that was my concern, these are all concerns I raised at the regional as well. And, you know, I, I want to be clear, I'm not expressing any sense that anyone currently on the committee has malevolence in the choosing. They're not, I, I'm not, you know, expressing or indication that there's a conspiracy to push Southampton out. My concern is that if you, even with the two-year review, there's turnover in school committees. The institutional memory is limited to a period of time. And at a certain point, these conversations that were had during these five district agreement come, over the last couple of years, will be forgotten. And a lot of the upset and the reason why we had the concerns and reservations about a representative vote versus a Senate-style vote will be forgotten. And at that point, the, it will very, it very could easily end up as initially drafted, when somebody digs out the old draft and says, hey, look, doesn't it make sense? You know, and my concern with that is, is in theory, with the way that that was set up, with the two from each, to each regional, you could in theory have three representatives from Chesterfield-Goshen and three representatives from Williamsburg at West Hampton, which account for less than twenty percent of the entire population of the school district, controlling sixty percent of the vote on central office budget. That's my concern.
I understand your concern. I don't think anybody's looking to kick the can down two years. I think they just want to let the dust settle. You know, take the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, as far as the principal, superintendent valuation go. We can all agree on that. Work collaboratively on that. And then come fall, start again discussing the financial piece.
So I have some thoughts, no surprise. Anybody else?
Well, sorry.
Just gonna make a motion.
I'm not making any motion. I'm, I think that, uh, you know, we can restart in the fall, but it's gonna be the same. Like, I don't see that issue, not to be pessimistic, I prefer to think of myself as a realist. I don't see that getting solved because it's based on mistrust. And part of the institutional memory that we have right now is that the members actually trust each other more than they did the last cycle. But that could reverse easily down the road and then we're further away from getting a representative-style vote, plus there's the, you know, the refrain in my head that John kept saying about, you know, silence is agreement. And I don't want to create the misconception that we agree that everything should be an equal vote based on committee rather than based on population.
I was under the assumption that as long as you saw the budget two weeks before it was presented to the high school budget and everybody had their say, nobody's proposing to add like crazy positions to the central office. We understand there are these limitations and that that's not...
What written language here would prohibit that from happening? I agree with you, I, I do believe that's everyone's intent.
Okay, so let's just say, all right, so let's just say I said, you know what? We're gonna offer, we need three more positions in central office. We don't care what it costs, we need these positions. We presented to all districts committee. Clearly, it would not be a big hit with anybody. And I'd have to justify why prove my argument, which probably that wouldn't happen because I think we're all on the same page. I understand everybody has limited resources, so I guess it's a matter of trust.
But at that, but at that meeting, there would be no vote. That's merely an informational session. We would then have to go, like Norris, for example, the local school committee only in theory controls one vote, our mutual colleague that sits on that board. There are four other people that we would then have to get ahold of and educate and try and convince them, and we'd, we'd be down to a nine-day window to stir up the finance committee and the select board and the town administrator. Because the vote's actually gonna happen at the regional level, which is a much broader base. Now, one would argue, at that level, you have the weighted vote does apply. Not that I'm trying to agree with your argument, but under your scenario, that's what would happen. Could happen, that's in that, because ultimately, when the vote does happen, this process is allowing it to get to the weighted vote at the regional level, which is where the weighted vote sits. So I would then naturally say, well, if that's where we're gonna end up anyways, why can't we just do the weighted vote at the all district group where there is equal representation from the five towns, but their votes are weighted? So it's, it's a, so that there are two people from the local Southampton, two people from Regional, two people from Williamsburg, and they're applying the weighted vote versus a different group of elected officials that are up at Hampshire Regional that I don't blame them. Their charge is the regional district. Their, their charge, they're not voted in, their oath isn't to take what's in the best interest of Norris. That's not their charge, it's up at that area. So, and that's where I find flaw with everyone's pushback and argument, is they're agreeing to get it to the weighted vote, provided it's only Hampshire Regional's elected officials that get the, to have the vote. Well, if you're gonna have weighted vote anyways, why can't you do it at the district level where there's equal representation, there's two people from every community on there and then apply the weighted vote to those two people?
And, you know, to, to add to that, it's interesting that there's so much pushback on it because as it currently sits, Southampton is more in favor of, well, I can't speak for the committee. As a committee member, I'm more in favor of maintaining the status quo at central office. And so I would look to maintain the level of service without crushing anyone's budget. So why would that not be in the interest of all committees unless the other committees might wanna make a change, right? That would be against the status quo, that might be more costly. So when I'm thinking about, I want a representative vote, I'm thinking about, I want to make sure that the costs don't escalate too quickly. And if they, you know, that's the kind of reputation that Southampton has based on the previous comments of other people during those working group meetings. I wonder what they want and what they want the vote for. Which is suspicious, but...
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't support any of that either, though, Austin, because district enrollments are down, as I've showed in the presentation. There's no reason, I mean, I could see reallocating so if we didn't want a certain position but wanted a transportation and maintenance director. I understand that, that that would have to come from somewhere, that it would be my responsibility to reallocate funds. I'm just using that as a hypothetical so nobody gets scared that I'm cutting positions. I'm just using that in the same, the same breath, but, I don't know, I think we, all the committees have good working relationships.
Yeah, no, you know, I don't disagree with that, but I think in, in setting a policy, you have to remove all the people.
Understood.
You know, 'cause, you know.
Well, they might reset.
Well, right, I mean, at some point, you will retire in thirty years.
Right. Could we write something in the clause perhaps that for the next two years, we'll keep things?
So, this is, this is where I was going to throw out my thoughts here, is I kind of see three options on the table for us, and I think we need to do something. A is accepted as it's written, which I have my reservations. B, originally, I was thinking, we accept this, but in our motion, we say that we will agree to honor this agreement as written for one year. And to allow us to operate under this while we continue to work out the other two items. But then I read section ten that says, "This agreement will be binding upon all school committees who are party to this agreement. Changes may be made to the agreement through the period review process in section nine above, which somebody pointed out earlier. If an individual school committee wishes to withdraw from the agreement in full, that individual school committee must provide not less than two full years' notice to the group. However, such termination will not take effect until the beginning of the fiscal year at which termination from the group is intended." So under that, and also understanding that in the bigger scheme of things, and I believe, and it's on the table, and I'm not advocating one way or the other at this time, but it is on the table and has been for a while that the, it may be, that it is time for Southampton to evaluate whether or not continuing its relationship with Hampshire Regional School District is still in the best interest of the residents. The short answer is, I think it is. I actually think we need to move to an entire full K through twelve regional system. But that will require everybody else to come in. There's an exit clause under the sixty-six agreement. It's a one-year exit clause. And when you give notice, whatever that notice is, which can only be done by the board of selectmen, by the way, when you give notice, whatever debt is on the books at that point in time, you're financially responsible until that debt's gone. Today, there is no debt on the books at Hampshire Regional. There is discussion about adding debt, so just be mindful of that as we move it. So, what I'm thinking is, we could approve this, then immediately exercise our rights under... under exit, under Section 10, to give notice that where we're drawing from this, we intend to withdraw from this agreement within the two years under that clause, and put the caveat, if we do not continue to make further inroads on the weighted vote and continue discussions on it, since it's, you know, it's two years. Honestly, do I think we can turn this around in a year? Probably not. But two years, I think we should be able to resolve whether, you know, and it's not a matter of getting the other communities to agree with us. It's only a matter of getting all five communities to the table to have an honest discussion about where we see this going, and then, as a, as a school committee, and ultimately select board, making a decision on what's right and in the best interest of town Southampton. So I, I see this as, we need to move forward, we need to honor, and I have no objections to the evaluation of the superintendent, no objections to the wording in here on hiring new super, even though we're not gonna utilize that language in the next two years. You know, I'm, I'm good with all, everything that's in here. My concerns, as Dylan pointed out, is what's not in here. And I think, as a sign of good faith, we can say, yeah, we're good with what's written here, but these two points, we feel still need to be discussed, and we're setting the clock. We're giving you a two-year window to have these discussions, or we're out of this agreement and we're back to where we started from. I don't know what everyone's thoughts are on that. That means you have to run for reelection.
No.
Sure.
If you just say, we don't accept it at all, what happens? Like, if you just ultimately...
Then it sits, then it sits, it sits in flux, because, because in theory, the other four, it has to be unanimous, and the other four committees have agreed to this, so if we don't, in, we could continue to practice it without taking the vote. And it's pretty much what we've done since 66, because there never has been a written agreement.
But there's no, like, penalty to you for not accepting it?
No, but I, but I think in fairness to the staff in central office and the superintendent, where we can give closure to certain issues, I mean, it, it's fair that superintendent get evaluated. It's fair that superintendent understand that process, which this spells out. So, you know, I think there's some value in agreeing to the terms that we aren't in disagreement on.
What about this idea? I understand, I...
I can't repeat how you worded it, so, you know.
What if for a term of two years, we kept it as a level service budget? And then at such time, let's just say, somebody had the crazy idea and they wanted to add three positions, that we would need, you know, a majority vote or...
Majority vote based on what?
Well...
We circle back to the same thing.
I don't see, I don't see positions being added, so in my mind, it's...
It's to be up during the next two years. Is that what you mean? Because, because you don't see in the next two years any new positions coming in?
Well...
Which kind of, so I would, I would push back a little bit, because at some point, times may have changed, but going through the initial hiring process and you, and you coming on board and accepting the positions, one of the charges from this committee was to determine whether or not, in your professional judgment, you felt that the district would benefit from an assistant superintendent. So that would tell me that, that that, that is just not gonna happen in the next two years, right? Because that, well, it could be a reclass, I guess, but...
Well, my thoughts, yeah, if I restructured central office, keeping that in mind, the ask wouldn't be for some, an additional salary of $130,000. It would be, you know, I just, I can't really discuss this right now, but with restructuring, I keep that all in mind.
But I, I don't think the budget, the budget is not the issue per se, because even if we, even if we adopt this as it sits, in theory, for the next two years, I mean, you know, it's, it's still has to go to the Regional. Until there's, until there's an agreement on how the central office budget is to be voted upon, that has entered into this agreement, it still goes up to the Regional. It's still, you know, comes out to the individual committees at some point. I mean, it's, it's...
Well, it's, it's, it's set once it comes out to the other committees.
Right. But it goes up to the Regional, it's, it's public at that point. There are representatives, there's a representative at least from Norris up there, there's representatives from the town. I'm not disagreeing with the, I understand what the concern you're trying to assuage with that. My concern is not specifically the budget, because my concern is where this ends up down the road. And it's not just adding. I mean, it's, it's the point of the representative vote, because you could easily just as much say that you end up in a situation, and I'm not throwing shade at Chesterfield-Goshen or Williamsburg, but you're in a situation where Goshen is facing like a 17% increase in their apportionment from the Regional this year. They could, if you had, and, and Williamsburg is reaching a pretty high as well. Again, in theory, if we, if someone was to adopt, because of forgetting institutional memories, we're looking 25 years down the road, right? And someone was to adopt the current, the draft version of the apportion vote, right? Which is 60%, they could go and say, central office budget's being cut by $185,000. Figure out what you wanna do with it, because we're gonna keep our, we're not gonna accept your 17% increase to the Regional. And that will, that will take care of our budget. And then two towns dictate what the central office budget is. That's, that's my concern. Two towns that are contributing 35 cents or 30 cents in the dollar. That is, so that my concern is, that's where we could potentially end up. I think that's disadvantageous for Southampton, I think that's disadvantageous for the Regional, I think it's, I just, I think it's a bad decision to get to that point. And my concern is, if you don't address it, it will not get addressed ever. That's where I sit.
So, John, what if there are added, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask a procedural question, because I'm not sure. So if they had a Hampshire Regional meeting and you're not available, does Margaret's vote weigh heavier then? Like, how's that work? So we don't lose our percentage if you don't show for the meeting?
How does that, that is... Southampton's present percentage is evenly split amongst however many number of voters there are.
Present members?
Right, right.
Okay.
So we'll always have our percentage show? If you have full attendance? So, again, say we have five people and it's 40% for simple math, each Southampton vote is 8%. If two people aren't there to cast their ballot, 16% will not be recorded. It's not like that 16 then shifts to the other three members that are there? Right? You follow me?
Yes.
Is that how it is? I can, it is a black box, man. I put the numbers into those little boxes and you get a number out at the end. I have not figured out the math in the middle.
Yeah. So you have to be physically, we have to have 100% quorum to get the full 52% vote.
Hey, but you have to reach a majority of the voters in attendance for something to pass. So it's weird, and that's why quorum, that's why there's a weighted quorum, too. So you could, in theory, have one Southampton and almost everyone else show up and you, or, and you might not have quorum. If you have most of Southampton, like one from every other committee, you're gonna have quorum. It's weird like that. It's, it is...
All right, after we push this through, we'll go up there and we'll fix that.
What's the committee want to do with this?
I think it has important information in it. I don't know if the separate budget issues and voting can be just, it has to be addressed in a separate, a separate document. Does it have to be part of this?
This is... No, I don't think it has to be. I mean, the short answer is no, I don't think it has to be. It could be a separate document. I think approving this as is, and at the same time exercising our right under Section 10 to exit in two years, sends the message that we're good with this, but we still wanna discuss...
Providing we continue and then...
We wanna continue, we, we don't need resolution in our favor, but we wanna continue to have people at the table discussing the weighted vote and cost allocations.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, all the work that's gone into this document.
John, what happens, let's say we have conversations on a regular basis for the next two years and no resolution has come forward at that time, then...
I think Southampton would then, short of another vote, Southampton would then exit this agreement and not be bound by it. Again, understanding that the regional district only requires one-year notice, and this is requiring a two-year notice. So it's somewhat a safety net, it's leaving the option on the table, so that we can, I mean, it's kind of like, we're still, we still wanna hold on to some of the playing cards to keep the conversation going. Because my fear is, if we just approve it as is, you know, which has been said by, you know, some other committee members, it's like, okay, we're done. No, let's, and I agree, a lot of work has gone into this, and a lot of time, and then there's been a lot of passionate opinions on both, well, on all seven sides of the argument. So I think there is some good stuff in here, it just doesn't go all the way for, for Southampton's point of view at the elementary school, which is how I'm voting here. I'm not so sure, wearing my selectman hat, I would vote the same way. But as chair of this committee, I feel we need to, we need to hold some cards to continue to press the conversations around, to resolve the weighted vote and the cost allocations. Even if they don't change, we need to continue the conversation with, with the five chairs, the all-district committee, whoever it may be, to try and finalize that. And I think that's all we're asking for. We're not saying it's gotta be our way. We just don't wanna end the conversation on those two points.
Well, it does, from my understanding, you just said that if, we'll continue to have those discussions, and you didn't say the words, "if it doesn't go our way," but if resolution isn't made, that you will back out of the agreement and go your way or what?
Because the way the current agreement's written, that's our only recourse. We have to give two years' notice under Section 10. Doesn't say up to 10, it's, or up to two years, it says, it has to be two years' notice. Other discussion. Hearing none. Is there, is there a motion to go with Option C, which is to approve the...
I'll make the motion to approve the...
Agreement as written?
With, using...
And immediately exercise our rights under Section 10 to serve notice that we are exiting this agreement within two years, we reserve the right to exit this agreement within two years. And it is our desire that the other communities will continue an open and transparent dialogue
In good shape.
revolving around weighted vote at the all-district level and cost allocations. Motion made by Allison?
Second.
Seconded by Austin.
Well said, Al.
I'm glad you slipped, slipped it to me on paper.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Vote is four to one. Update on removing COVID restrictions currently in place, specifically but not limited to returning the HVAC operations to a pre-COVID operation level and reopening the school to the public.
It's kind of tricky, because we're operating out of order with the agenda where the reports don't go prior to this, so we haven't gone over the principal's report and the superintendent's report to kind of figure out what the status of things are in the school to then move to this.
You wanna, you wanna table this until after reports? That's fine.
I do, yeah, I think I want the reports first.
Okay.
I know that you guys move these things on the agenda. Okay.
Principal's report?
That was, sorry, the reason for that, just so you know, came from the regional level and the report's taking an hour and a half. And we had people who were giving presentations on newer ongoing business and having to wait for every report from every single school committee and every single subcommittee until they could get to it.
So let me get this right. Southampton Elementary Local School District was forced to change its operating procedures because the Hampshire Regional School Committee could not control its own agenda?
I would not...
Is that what I'm hearing?
I did not say that.
Okay.
I said that is...
Not in that many words.
Noting the time, moving on to principal's report.
And just so you know, we are not the William E. Norris Elementary School, we are just the William E. Norris School.
Yeah.
That's what says it up here.
I know.
That's central office.
I guess I need to tell people. Okay.
I really can't have the word elementary, that makes it a thing?
It does to some people.
Okay.
It does to some people.
Thank you.
Yep. We are an elementary school, but our name is William E. Norris School. So, my principal's report, is it, oh, do you need to vote on changing the agenda, or we can just go out of order?
I think the chair can do it.
Yeah, we're going out of order, correct?
Okay, thank you. So all students in grades three through six have completed the ELAMCAS test over the last few weeks, and the math testing begins on Tuesday, April 26th, with grade six going first. I already updated you on the school choice offerings there. We were awarded the Stars residency grant from the Mass Cultural Council. We've had Brittany, I think it's Guttermuth, from the Mass Audubon Society, working with our grade four students, and it's over the period of eight days. Students are learning about climate change, how it impacts animals, non-renewable and renewable energy, and they will create presentations as a culminating activity. It's been great, kids love it. Some of the craziness that's happening at the end of the year, we have so much going on, I'm sure that there's something not here, but grade three has been going, each, each class has been going to Storrida Village for a field trip. Next week is our spring break. May 12th is kindergarten orientation at 6:00 in the Norris Cafeteria for parents only. May 13th is a half-day of school at noon dismissal, and in the afternoon, it's a professional development for teachers. We are doing the reunification drill. I did send out communication to parents in grades four, five, and six. I actually added, told all parents in, in the end, because I put it in our Tiger Talk, that we are asking parents of students in grades four, five, and six if they'd like to volunteer their children to participate in the reunification drill, which would mean they stay at school on that half-day, have lunch with us, you know, the teachers, and, and then participate in the reunification drill, which is, a scenario comes upon us that we have to evacuate the school, and then it is determined that we are going to have to relocate. We are working with the Southampton Police Department and the Fire Department on this, and we've had a couple meetings. We don't wanna make it scary for kids. It's not like it's, you know, a 911 emergency where it's an intruder or anything like that. We're really just trying to provide the safety and security protocols for the teachers to understand in case we ever had to actually relocate and reunify students with their parents. So I did send something out, and we have a few people signing up, but not enough. So if you're available to pick your child up at Hampshire on that day, I think the time I said was between 1:30 and 2:00, that would be fantastic if you could sign up. May 14th is the Norris School Spring Fair, which will be like our, the bazaar that we normally have in the fall. It's looking like it's gonna be great. I'm sure Allison has updates from the PTO. May 17th, we're having an Arts in the Park, which will be music and an outdoor art concert at 9:30 for students and families. More information to follow on that. Grade five is going on a field trip to Five Wits, and it's actually in Albany on May 19th. And it's a team-building activity where you're in a room where you have to figure out as a team how to get out. It's one of those puzzle escape rooms. Exactly.
So, Albany, New York?
Yeah. Yes.
Do you require school committee to authorize field trips outside the state of Massachusetts?
That's interesting.
I, I...
You may have to do that, which we've never done before, and she's already gone twice.
It is in Albany.
I think within state is superintendent, but out of state...
Okay.
On the superintendent's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to...
Well, do you, I assume you recommend this trip?
Yeah, if I can charter one, that sounds fun.
I already signed up to try.
Do you have comp, do you have comp time?
Right?
That's why I'm approving it.
Yes, it sounds wonderful.
Right, so to formalize it...
Sorry about that.
I'll make the motion to approve the field trip to Albany, New York, to, what's it called, Five Wits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
The website's really cool, y'all should check it out.
I'll remember that next time, I'll never forget that again.
Please continue.
It's like we don't go to Galapagos Islands, you know, we just go to Enfield usually, not Enfield, but Storrida Village. Let's see, senior walkthroughs will happen on June 2nd, where the seniors that are graduating from Hampshire that previously went to Norris come back to Norris to walk through in their caps and gowns. It's a really exciting event. Field day is scheduled for June 9th with a rain date of June 10th. Grade six step-up day is to be announced, usually that week of, last week of school, but we just wanna make sure we don't have any more snow days or anything that we need to, I know, who knows? June 16th...
I know.
June 16th is the last day of school, which is a half-day noon dismissal, as long as we have no more snow days.
Okay.
And then the enrollment, John, I sent this to you, I know that at the last meeting you asked if we could go back to the spread... The spreadsheet. So I didn't include as much information as in the last one because I think that there was too much information in the last one. So
No, that one's good.
You know, we have a number here from September of 2019, September of 2021, the out-of-district numbers for this year, school choice for this year, and then what it looked like from September, then to January, and from January to April. And then I can tell you again in what it looks like in June. Does that look okay?
So my, and thank you for doing this. The only thing I would do is I would either add September of 2020, because you have 19 and 21.
Well, the reason why I didn't do 2020 was because of hybrid, remote, and homeschool. And I thought that would really skew the numbers.
Okay. Then that's fine. So over, over time, we'll get to where we can see a three-year rolling average.
Right.
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
Otherwise, it looks, it looks fine to me.
So the school choice column is school choice in?
Yes.
Okay. Questions on superintendent's report? And just so you know, Dr. Bonville, you were out of the room, that there was a suggestion that we go through the reports and before we take up Item B under ongoing business, so we could hear administration's thoughts before we rule on changes in COVID procedures.
Sure. I'll just give you the quick highlights. All the schools are mask optional right now. Last night at West Hampton School Committee, they decided to amend their policy to not only be mask optional, but before they hadn't made the amendment about visitors, contractors, and vendors, who are now mask optional. We have had an increase in COVID cases the last couple of weeks. It's been slight. And I think, I'm not sure if Stephanie emailed us or not, but I think there was a cluster in grade two last week, and, and a cluster now in grade one, meaning, I think there's four, three students?
So there were three, now there are four.
Yep. Yep. So she's been in touch with Board of Health in South Hadley. They're aware of this. She's reached out to the state. We're doing what we need to do.
I'm sorry, Board of Health in South Hadley?
Yes.
South Hadley?
Well, she
Did the contact tracing?
Contact tracing. I meant that one for real. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
John, easy.
So it was
Easy, tiger.
It's because you changed the reports. You shouldn't change the reports. So it was four students in one classroom?
Yes.
So Elisa, for the last time, I was wondering why you're looking at me like that. Yeah, sharing heart. So Elisa did send home
This is a contact tracing.
Right.
She's still doing that? I thought
Yes, till June 30th. You're interrupting.
You're all good. So Elisa did send home a message with the first cluster strongly encouraging wearing masks. Because according to policy, that, that, that's the most we can do is encourage, and that's gone well. So second notice will go
Has that gone out yet? We sent a letter home today notifying everyone in the classroom. And then we were going to send a text message this evening strongly encouraging masks, that, because there was another positive since school left. And I think that, we don't usually use text messaging for parents. We always send an email. But I, I think we sent it early one morning last week when the second grade one happened. And parent response was like really good. So we feel like when there's something really important to say, and we really want you to see it, you're on your phone. So the, the text message will go out tonight to the families in that great classroom.
I would agree. I, I think a text message, you'll get reviewed within an hour, if not sooner. An email's usually 24 hours.
Right.
My, my question on two clusters, of the two clusters, were there siblings? Meaning the first, the first cluster and the second cluster
I don't think so.
Were their siblings tied? Okay.
I asked that, too. The state was going to
Was that identified through pool testing, or is it just reported cases or a combination?
Combination.
Okay.
I believe it was a combination, yeah.
Did this week's pools all come back already?
Yep. And that's when the first grade one was identified.
Okay.
So last week it wasn't in the pool, I, I don't think. This week it was in the pool. We've asked parents, we've asked the teacher to separate the desks, to keep the windows open. I went around to every classroom in the school today to make sure teachers are keeping their windows open, or at least having them open for a majority of the time. I mean, this morning it was cold. So they were open, and then they were closed, and then they were opening them back up when it got warm again. I've asked them not to have desks touching each other, which, you know, everybody has, we want, it's, it's really difficult because we want to go back to normal, of course. And we want kids working in groups, and we want kids, you know, communicating with each other, and giving their ideas and their opinions, and they're arguing their, their points of view and things like that. But, you know, we also want them to be safe. So, you know, we walk around in classrooms and we expect kids are working in groups, and they're not desks in rows like they were in 1950s. But because of COVID, we were desks in rows because we were keeping kids away from each other. So it's, it's really hard to, to find a happy medium.
And, and that's on the kids. How, how are, what do the COVID positive results look for faculty and staff? And whether you know the numbers or not, is there a continual, continuation strain on substitutions?
Yes, there is a strain for substitutions, for sure. I think it's pretty equal where staff and stu-, at first, I would say, right after February vacation and we took the masks off, the first positives we were seeing were staff members and not kids. And then just the last few weeks, it's been the kids. And staff as well, but not the number that we were seeing before.
Is that second Omicron variant? Now, most of the cases are the second variant that's coming through. And that's where we're seeing the increase.
I'm sorry, didn't, wasn't prepared for that level of detail, but, you know.
You gotta go with the flow.
It's okay, as long as you're okay with me saying, not 100%, but
We feel as a highly compensated employee, you're able to handle our questions with
Well, we've had 11 positive cases this week. So that's, that's so far, it's only one.
If four of them are children, that means seven faculty.
Last week was six.
Right.
Well, the four were in that one cluster.
Right.
In one grade. So I
What constitutes a cluster?
I think it's two faculty members at this point. And nine kids.
And a cluster is classified as two or more, or three, three or more? Okay. Okay.
So I announced that there was a cluster when we were at three, but then we learned of one more after school.
Gotcha.
I have to think of a word for that one.
Cluster plus.
Cluster plus.
Anything else, superintendent?
Um, yeah. So, so at week, at-home weekly test kits have been given by the state for free, and they were going to stop on April 22nd. They've decided to extend that for a while. It may not go till the end of June. But we, we're still continuing handing those
Do we, we have an ample inventory? And, and do we have an ample inventory enough that this Friday for April break, everyone's going home with them that wants them?
I think we had already planned on that.
Yeah, we do. Stephanie is picking up more tomorrow.
If you happen to run low, I think there's an office over here that has a surplus that's about to expire.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of surveys have gone out in the last couple of weeks. One is about values. I did attend all the faculty meetings to discuss what our core beliefs about education were. And it's important to have these conversations because we need to know the direction that we're going in the next 10 years. And if, even if you look back in the last 10 years, things have really changed a lot. Like social, emotional learning wasn't even mentioned 10 years ago. Or meeting the needs of all students wasn't stressed as much as it is now. And once I received all the answers from the faculty, I put it out to the parents. And this is, some of the top values were ability to independently and patiently problem-solve and think critically, ability to communicate and work collaboratively with others, hard work ethic, perseverance and effort, kindness, empathy and compassion for others, and having integrity and possessing truthfulness. So we'll, we'll give students a similar survey probably right after vacation, just so we have all of community input. Nothing new with that. The other survey was a school choice in and out survey, and 82 families responded, which was wonderful. We really wanted to know why families were choosing to either enter our district or exit it. And the biggest reasons for entering it were just the positive reputation of all of our schools, small class sizes, high academic expectations, and real sense of community. And just the two negatives that were identified were lack of diversity. So if a student, if a diverse family, they felt more comfortable going elsewhere, so their student wasn't the only student of color in the class. And middle, there was a suggestion, too, about middle school sports, increasing offerings of that. And I have noticed in the last survey, two families are expressing an interest for increased after-school clubs and activities, I think at all grade levels. So that's just something to note. And with our monthly chairs meeting, John already discussed that. And it was about my evaluation.
Okay. Any, any additional questions? Next is Chair's report. Other than the evaluation, we did, we, the chairs were all provided the, the results of the survey. After two and a half hours, we adjourned the meeting. I'm not really sure what we really talked about. I, I know there was a lot of humor. And we're going to pick up on the, the result, the survey results at our next meeting. We, just a general update and overview. I don't believe there's anything
Marissa with the board docs.
Yeah, right. So Margaret Larson, Chair of Hampshire Regional, is taking on a, a project of looking at some sort of program, whether it's boardable, board documents, that would centralize how we communicate amongst ourselves as committees and also as a region together to streamline and make it easy, easier. Her focus, what she's bringing forward, is to find a balance between the internal facing and the customer facing or the citizen's side, and how they could easily find the minutes and the agendas and all that. She presented one, looked great. Pricing is an issue. She's going to continue to look at it. I mean, was it $16,000?
I think it ended up being like $3,500 per
Committee?
You're right.
Yeah.
And then I know I've been seeing emails between Rachel, my administrative assistant, and Kim Florick about different ideas, such as having a different website for school committee members. Somebody at last, or the night, yeah, last night's school committee meeting suggested that on the agenda, so instead of having all the paperwork here about the, the policies, for example, that you would click on the link right there and the policy would pop up, which, I'm like, genius, I wish I'd thought of that a long time ago. So we're thinking of more inexpensive ways as well, recognizing that not all committees feel comfortable spending that kind of money. So we're still looking.
And we'll, we'll continue to meet on a monthly basis. And again, the underlying mission of the five chairs is just to coordinate on key topics that are of interest or necessity to all committees, so that we're all talking about them within the same month. And I forget the topic, but didn't we also talk about having a joint informational session only amongst all the committees? That might have been on, if she
About the board docs, then?
That might have been, yeah.
Yeah, I think if we, once we narrow down the choices, I think that absolutely makes sense.
More information to come on that. Hampshire Regional?
Thanks, John.
No problem.
Yeah, as Diana mentioned, we reviewed all the policies that we reviewed here, that we reviewed the Hampshire Regional policies as well. Accepted a donation of computers that Kim Florick picked out for the high school. So again, thanks to Kim, and thank you to Smith College for, for that up at the high school. Passed the five district working agreement up there, with said objections noted up in that, in the regional as well. What else is going on? Just there, oh, we, there's an ongoing discussion review of the security camera policy, but due to Mr. Cleary's absence, we did not discuss that. That will be discussed at next school committee meeting. So if you have questions about security cameras in the school, we can address that.
And, and this is different than body cameras? Different discussion? Or the same? Or parallel?
It's
Is the overall general discussion about facial recognition software?
Yes. And Margaret has had a conversation with Chief Ellingsworth to dispel some incorrect survey results that were published in our fine local newspaper. So that is where, I guess, we're at, that, that conversation will continue. What else did we go over? Oh, they're, they're, they're starting the DC field trip again. That's happening this next year, which sounds awesome. I want to go. It sounds like a fun trip. They're really going to hit all, so that, that's been approved. And the senior bonfire, so the tradition, this year, June 1st, are bringing back, which was a COVID started and the kids were given an option of either bonfire, which they did last year, or the other traditional, what's the name, ice cream social, or, or it was breakfast, I'm sorry, it was breakfast, was the one that they used to do. And the seniors were given a choice this year, do you want to go back to having a breakfast indoors in the church, or do you want to have the bonfires where the, where the school committee serves root beer floats? And the seniors chose root beer floats and bonfires. So that's happening June 1st. I know they were looking for volunteers to help out up there, but I don't
Don't look at me. I'm just saying.
June 1st, the seniors will be having their, having their end-of-year bonfire. That's about it for highlights.
No questions. PTO?
They had a lengthy conversation about the Smithland grant that they got for the chicken coop. And they, she talked about how she, she talked all about it, but how it's going to tie in with the entire school committee, not just with kindergarten. And she's hoping to even bring it into the neurodiversity program as well, with some of the kids that might be having some behavioral issues, have them help care for the eggs, care for the chickens, et cetera. She did also ask for some extra money to give me some more things towards that. There is a teacher who will be taking them home this summer, but in the future, they're hoping to keep them at the school and have some kind of family sign-up type of thing for school vacations, weekends, and the summer of coming in to care for them, feed them. She's also going to be doing a donation table, raffle type of thing at the spring, bizarre craft fair. She's also probably looking into doing a T-shirt fundraiser. And then Mr. Hallett was asking for somebody for Field Day, looking into the bounce house, the tent, and other various supplies he needs. And he also had a second request, both passed, by the way, for the golf lessons again for fifth and sixth graders. It's the professional golfer, Ed Tuig, or I'm not sure if I said his name right.
That's correct.
He comes for 14 different visits. So he was asking for donations for both Field Day and for the golf lessons. And then they were just finishing up on some of the last-minute planning for the bazaar. There'll be about 30 vendors. There's going to be a food truck starting at 11. The book fair will be there. They are still doing a kids' craft table. And there's also the crafts that the teachers make with the kids as well.
Okay. School council?
School council had its last meeting on March 16th, where we continued to discuss the school improvement plan, as well as various ideas for increasing student attitudes towards ownership and community in the school. So we'll continue those discussions in our next meeting, which is set to take, take place on April 23rd.
Okay.
23rd or 27th?
Um
20th or 23rd?
27th is a week from Sunday.
April?
No.
Oh.
It's on Wednesday.
Yeah, it should be Wednesday to 27th.
Yeah, 27th.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was in the wrong month.
That's okay.
So April 27th.
And collaborative?
The last collaborative meeting was held at the same time as our budget preliminary approval meeting, so I wasn't able to attend both. It seems to be like a constant overlap with our meetings. But we've attended, I've attended more meetings this year with the change to the second week than I have in the last two years. So that's good. I'm not sure if everybody gets the collaborative educational newsletters. I can forward those. Elisa, do you get those?
I do.
Okay. Because they have a lot of really good professional development in the most recent ones. It just, they are celebrating autism for Autism Acceptance Month, and there's a lot of good professional development information in these newsletters, so.
Just, um, on, on the collaborative, have each one of you taken the course for new school committee membership?
I don't think so.
Can we, can we find out like when the next two or three are available?
There's regular ones coming up. I was waiting for, to become an elected member as opposed to an appointed member.
There hasn't been
We're not going to make you retake it.
Well, no, it was more, if there was a vigorous, you know, multiple candidate election process with primaries and runoffs, I didn't want to, you know.
Yeah.
So I figured
I'd zoom at one point.
They are, they are, there's a local one coming up in, in, in May or June. It's, that's up in the Greenfield area. That's what I was waiting for.
Yeah, because there hasn't been anything
There's a whole bunch. They just scheduled a whole bunch of them. So there's one up here.
I was lucky. I got to take mine in North Hampton.
How'd you find out about it?
On the Mass website.
The Mass website. Can you forward that information when you
Yeah, will do.
And
Me, too.
It's before 9 o'clock. Would you like to give us an update? It's before nine o'clock. Would you like to give us an update? Go ahead, Francine. I promised Francine if we ran past ten, I wouldn't make her stay and give a report.
Yeah.
Quarter to eleven last night. I hope you finish up. Okay, just, just a couple of things, Francine, Tishman, so, Select Board liaison. I just wanna mention that on the base, on, on the basis of a recommendation from the Capital Improvement Committee, the Select Board adopted a policy that each year, from the allocated amount of dollars in the Capital Improvement Fund, fifty percent of that is gonna be held in reserve, so that we start to accumulate funds, not go, you know, spend everything we have every year and then we have nothing left in reserve. So with that, this year, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which approximately seventy-five thousand will be put in that reserve fund, leaving seventy-five thousand made available. So the good news for Norris is that two of the proposals were among the top ten that were recommended for funding by the Capital Improvement Committee. And they are seventy-four hundred dollars for the roof and seventy-five hundred dollars for the masonry work that needs to be done at the entrance. That's not, I mean, we voted to accept and approve their recommendations, but ultimately, it's gonna go to the, to the town at the annual town meeting for vote. And then another thing, any questions about that? I don't know how many Norris put in altogether, but you got those two. Okay.
But you withdrew two.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, and they, and, and they all got ranked.
They were.
Starting at, so masonry was number one priority-
Yes.
Of the entire town.
Yeah.
And, and then, so that got approved. Faci- a heating upgrade at the highway facilities was second. They passed because of the cost on the street sweeper, the wheel loader. They then accepted or recommended this, the water lines at the cemetery that are short. They, they have an appropriation, they need thirteen thousand to make that happen. And then we went down to the North School roof repair at seventy-four hundred, which those four put us about eighty thousand, and as Francine said, we're trying to stay at the seventy-five. So we stopped at that point.
Yeah. It was really all the, the, all the funds that they had available to them. And so proportionately, I think you got two and some got none, so. But, you know, just understand that you were rated among the top ten that they selected. And then finally, I don't, I don't know, do you know about the Excellence in Public Health Program? Are you aware of that? Okay. Southampton is part of a twenty-town Hampshire County shared public health initiative under the direction of the Northampton Health Department. Norris has already benefited from some of the services like the vaccine clinics. Now the COVID is behind us, fingers crossed, which I hope is for good. Our town, and specifically the school, can benefit from some of the support services, educational programming, and supplies the grant program can provide. Up to now, they've spent all their time on COVID. Now we're gonna be looking at other, other things. The school nursing staff is already well aware of, of the program. It's just now that the resources for other things can be utilized in a more general, for more general public health matters, such as car safety seats, the ones that apply to, to the school. Car safety seats, CPR training, contact tracing for other infectious diseases, and informational sessions about health issues confronting school-aged children. So, like I said, I know the school nurse is already aware of it. Through our Department of Health, they'll start to coordinate the services based on what the school expresses are their priorities for their students. So some other resources coming to you, so that's it.
Thank you.
Can I ask what the other three were that were not approved?
I only have, I have two others. I have the, the locker painting at sixteen thousand.
That's the electrostatic spraying of the lockers, yeah.
And then enhancements or additions to the security cameras. That was, so there was a question at the Capitol Committee about that one, and we, the Capitol Committee took it as a request for upgrades, which is which is the primary reason why we received the lowest score out of the entire list.
The lowest, the up, equipment upgrades?
For the security cameras, that it was an enhancement to the security or an add-on-
Right.
That there wasn't anything immediately wrong with the existing-
Correct.
System, so-
Yep.
Based on the scale, pointing system that was in there.
And then the cafeteria point-of-sale system was on there, right?
Yes, so point-of-sale was on there. That one was rejected for lack of supporting documents, so it didn't make the list.
And I know one of the things that was submitted was equipment upgrades of vacuums and extractors.
Carpet cleaners.
Yeah, so we, our extractors for the vacuums for when they do shampoo the rugs in the summer are not meeting the need for what we, they're old, they're not working well. And we feel that because they didn't soak up as much water as they should have last year was part of the problem with the, one of the rooms that we had mold in. You know, it's a lot of money to buy these machines. However, I was told by a Capitol Committee member that it wouldn't be approved because it was vacuums and extractors, not like when the police department asks for a whole unit of walkie-talkies. It's all walkie-talkies, even though that's equipment. This was, you know, we're trying to get to five thousand dollars in order to have it be approved by Capitol, but your, your, two different items are not five thousand. I, I get, I get it. But it's, you know, how else do we buy these things in our regular budget? So we're just gonna have to buy one thing at a time each year for the next couple of years with our regular budget, so.
Yeah. Possible S for money.
If we had any.
Okay, that, we're gonna go back up to old business, letter B. Update on removing COVID restrictions currently in place, return HVAC operation, pre-COVID operations level, and reopen the school to the public. So let's, let's take them in order. So the HVAC system, we are, you know, as of tomorrow, we're gonna be our first day above seventy degrees back-to-back. The thought, I believe, is that more windows will be opened within the school, therefore negating the possibility or the need to maintain the systems twenty-four seven.
Correct.
So I'm sure we'll have some discussion on this, but why don't we start with if there is a recommendation from administration to either maintain what we're doing or give flexibility?
I mean, I would like to cut back on running the HVAC system twenty-four hours to while school is in session. Or special events held in the school, such as the spring fair.
The town meeting.
The town meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So is it possible to program it, or does someone have to be there to flip the switch on it?
We can have the BG Mechanical come in and actually set it so that they're on and off at certain times.
And there is, there is a process to manually override and turn them on if need be?
Yes.
Right, i.e. Tuesday night, there's a night meeting, we don't have to call BG back.
Yes, I believe Tom knows how to do that. I will speak to him, but yes.
Another question. When we have events that are like one-time things, do those, do you have a custodial member there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So they could override it if they had to?
Yes.
I believe anytime the school-
Has an event.
Has outside activities, there is, they're required to have a custodian on duty.
Yep, except SYAA. They, they come at the end to clean up, but I don't believe they're there the whole time. But with an event like outside people renting that aren't used to the school, we always have a custodian there.
But I think SYAA starts right after school, do they not, or right after the, after-school program clears out?
When they have basketball, like-
Yeah.
Well, basketball's over now.
Yeah.
But yeah, so SYAA is there, except I'm thinking about the weekends for basketball-
Yeah.
When a custodian's not normally there on the weekend.
Gotcha.
But a custodian does go in to clean up after SYAA. I don't think they're there for the whole-
But when they are there on the weekends, at set times, so the, the system could be-
So go over them to one, kick on.
Right.
Okay.
Are there any state or federal recommendations right now, or OSHA recommendations regarding when the HVAC system should and shouldn't be, I know they wanted them at full capacity, but is, is there a change at all?
I thought everything was dropped when the-
I did too.
When Desi dropped. Which is why we, I'm trying to think of when the desks were able to come back together and when the buses were able to come back, kids were sitting and we weren't contact tracing, I feel like I haven't heard anything from anyone since then.
I know one of the Springfield School Committee meetings, they did say, like, they were like, well, proud to say we're gonna leave the HVAC systems still in place, so I don't think they have to be, but I know some schools are choosing to be.
I, I think it made sense while the windows were still closed. But, and, and, and you're only gonna change it, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're only looking to make this change as we enter the warmer weather. If for some reason we hit a week with a cold snap, then the windows are all closed.
Right.
The system would be out, it would be out during school hours anyways.
We could make that happen, yeah.
I think we're just changing like the times when-
Yep.
No bodies would be in the building. Given the fact that a lot of the rooms exchange all of the air multiple times in one hour.
Right.
So there's, you know, action.
Yep, so the recommendation from administration is to continue to operate the HVAC system at all times that school is in session and/or when the building is being utilized outside of school hours, when there are members of the community inside. And that BG Mechanical would be contacted to make the adjustments to the programming. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'd probably even go so far to say, could we, could we set the programming so that the system turns on thirty minutes before the first employee arrives? So there's a nice clean air exchange.
I, we could say seven to four. Because the before-school program starts at seven-thirty.
So, huh?
And then the after-school program goes until, it's a five or six?
Right, that's true. They're not in classrooms though, they're-
They go outside as much as they can, right?
They go outside a lot once the, the summer, this air is better, you know. But they do, they're in the cafeteria and usually cafeteria and outside and maybe the library. So I, whatever you want.
Again, the cafeteria and library are on their own systems, as we learned from our HVAC certification program that we all had to go through. So we, we could even narrow it down.
Okay.
Right, so that, to the extent that the system has the capability to shut off sections of the building that aren't used at four o'clock, great. But the sections like the cafeteria and the library that are utilized, that are on their own zone systems, push those to five o'clock.
Okay.
So Julianne made the motion?
Yep.
Second, seconded by Austin. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, next. Reopen the school to the public. I believe where we left this off is that we were gonna maintain status quo until April first, and then my memory says we then kicked it back to administration. I just want, let's talk about it.
Okay, so we opened up, allowed visitors to come in as of April first, not like advertised it and said, all volunteers that wanna come into Norris School, come into Norris School. So we just weren't as strict as we were before. But the lunch is, continues to be a problem because we're sitting four at a table now. And I also think that what we've, you know, I've been thinking about for a couple of years is I wanted to be in line with other schools in our district that don't allow parents to come in during the school day to have lunch with their children. I've discussed it with the school resource officer as well as a safety concern. And I think that since we haven't had parents having lunch with kids for the last few years, I think it's a good time to just call that, you know, over. We will think of other ways where maybe we can have celebrations with classrooms where parents can come in and have lunch with their kids or snack with their kids or something. I don't know, Mother's Day, Father's Day, or, or something, I, cause I know that it is special, it's something special that we've done. But it also, the day, this day and age is just different than, than it's been, so I feel it's safer to just continue with not having parents just come in for lunch whenever. But have families invited, parents invited to come in and help out in the classrooms and make sure their quarries are done and things like that. Like we've had parents go on field trips the last couple of weeks if they've had their updated quarries.
Comes back really quick, man, come back in a half hour.
They do come back pretty quick, yeah.
I literally did a drop-off. And I texted them from making like a half-hour layup.
Yeah, it's been good. It's been really nice, I mean, it's been really nice to have the parents back, you know, because they do wanna help and, and this whole chicken thing has taken on a whole new thing, thanks to the parents. And, so, you know, it's not that we don't want parents to, to come in and, and be with us and see what we do and help us what we do. It's really just a safety concern.
One of the concerns and questions is, we asked the staff to be highly vaccinated. Like we came, we fell just short of requiring vaccination around a younger pediatric population, younger kids maybe don't have access in the preschool yet to a vaccine, and we're pretty under-vaccinated across the school anyways with our numbers. What do we, like, as far as, we can't require volunteers to be vaccinated, but how does that impact if we've kind of almost fell short of requiring the staff in any future employment to be vaccinated?
I personally feel like most schools, that there, there's nothing you can do about visitors being vaccinated or not, and if we're open-
I'm talking more about volunteers. I'm not talking about visitors. I'm talking about volunteers within the classroom.
I still don't think you can require-
Cause we're having staff be vaccinated. Right, isn't that contingent-
Well, we, we don't have a mandatory vaccination requirement.
I thought we were requiring future employment to be vaccinated and that those that were-
We did, we did talk about making it a condition of, of future employment. I, I don't, I never remember anybody-
But then anybody currently employed wasn't required, but we're pretty close to ninety-five, ninety-seven percent anyways.
I thought we had tabled that. The other, the other committees such as West Hampton and the high school rescinded their mandatory vax policy. The anti-dumping right now is the only dis- district within our district that has it in place.
Okay.
And so are they applying that to visitors? Or just staff?
I don't know, we meet tomorrow night.
Okay.
No, but yeah, that's just been for staff, cause like in the evenings, they have youth sports there and coaching, and they're on their own. Cause who would enforce that?
Right. So maybe we take this in chunks. How, how do we feel about just not going back to the way it was with the lunch, lunches?
I actually was gonna bring that up before she even said it.
That you were?
I had never heard of a school letting parents come eat lunch. I've heard of events.
Right, Grandparents' Day.
Yeah. Or like picnic, parent picnic outside. So I had never heard of that until Norris.
Neither.
I was actually kinda shocked they did that because of security issues. And also with all the social emotional issues going on right now too, it's really hard for a kid to have their parent come and then all of a sudden have to go. And then they have to say goodbye and go back to class and focus, and that's a really big adjustment in itself, and we already have a lot of social emotional things going on right now. So I was gonna say that I think that should end as well, especially now that we've already had it ended for a while. But I would like to see the kids being able to eat with each other closer again. Because if they're sitting side by side in class, or on a bus, or on a field trip now, and things like that, why is it just in the cafeteria eating? That is suddenly the big spreader. Like if you're gonna get it in class, you're gonna get it in the cafeteria. It's not going anywhere.
Could we take that up in two parts?
I guess.
Okay, so can I ask a question?
Hold up. Is it about the first part?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is that a policy? The first part.
The parent one? Did you ever have it written anywhere?
No, that's a, that's a procedure. That is not a school committee. The only reason why we're discussing it now is because you have a visitor's policy in place. But who she allows for lunch or doesn't allow, that's really her purview.
Right, so is there any committee that, committee member that has an objection to this? Hearing none, then we just, you're not gonna get pushed back from us.
Thank you.
Second part. When can kids eat ten to a table?
I was like, when was the, what was the second part?
Ten to a table, with chocolate milk.
Oh, my god.
Well, maybe not ten, but, I mean, if you're, if you're this close in class, sometimes even closer, and there's po, you know, pictures being posted even on the Norris site of kids side by side unmasked, what's the difference between that and sitting in the cafeteria eating? To me, there is no difference. You're gonna get it either in the cafeteria, or you can get it in your classroom. It's there, we know it. But I do think if we are gonna go back to normal seating, maybe have some options if a family or a child even chooses to be separate. Like I have preschoolers that have come to me and say, I wanna wear my mask.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I know. How do I manage that in the cafeteria though, when there's-
I know.
I know. How do I manage that in the cafeteria, though, when there's 470 kids?
I know. But I don't think that everybody should have to be separated just in the cafeteria. Like, if, if we're doing spacing, then it needs to be spacing everywhere. It doesn't make sense to just have it in one area of the school. I know. I knew it was gonna be a big one. I told them I was gonna break it out.
It's okay. No.
It's, it's a tough one.
It is tough. You know, before it was, our children are secluded from each other. They're six feet apart. There's only two at a table. They don't, with their friends. Now, they're sitting where they wanna sit with three other people at a table within their, you know, homeroom. There hasn't been any problems, and I know it's like, makes us feel good and makes us feel safe, and it does. And, I mean, it's, we're not contact tracing. Who knows? If I go back and look at all these positive cases in the classrooms, did those kids sit at the same lunch table together? You know, we're not contact tracing, so we don't, we don't keep seating assignments. If, if we can fit all the kids in the cafeteria, four to a table, and nobody has to eat in their classrooms, then why can't we just keep it where it is with four now? And then if our numbers, we're opening the windows and our numbers go down, we're feeling comfortable, we could add more kids to the table. I think it was eight to a table before. You know, I, it feels like if they're, if they're sitting at a table with three of their friends and they're happy, why risk it? It, it's, I don't know. For me, it's like, it doesn't, it's not a huge deal to me, but I also have half of the people that want it and half of the people that don't, and I haven't heard from anybody complaining about four kids at a table until just now. So, and, and it's not a complaint. I'm sure it's just, you know.
It's not. It's more, it just doesn't make sense to me at all to, I mean, if you're gonna be separate in, in this room, then why aren't you separate in this room? And it, it makes no sense to me, and I get it, and, and I'm not complaining, and kids are happier that they're back to four, but then they're also like, okay, well, what about my best friends that I'm with all day, every day outside of school, who's not in my class, that I can't sit with, or that I can't even sit near because they're still, but then I can go on a field trip with them and be on the same bus two inches away from them, and then, so the whole, it, to me, it's just.
To Albany.
To Albany. But it just, it, that, to me, makes no sense.
But let me, let me ask you this, Elisa. You know, you have modified the seating to expand it, right? And, and your narrative there implied that, given certain circumstances, you would continue to return to pre-COVID.
Yeah, absolutely.
Seating. Do you envision that possibly happening before the end of the year? Maybe, maybe not. Do you, do you think that's what we're gonna start in September?
And, and do I have a, you know, statistic that I'm using? No. I just, we were feeling really good and everything was going really good. And so we were starting to increase it, which was the plan, and now we have 11 cases by Wednesday, and it doesn't feel like that's gonna continue with that plan in the foreseeable future, unless once we open up the windows and, you know, maybe after April vacation, it, it'll be better. Because I know, everybody's with everybody. I'm with everybody. We're all typically, you know, seem back to normal. Everybody's getting on planes again. I totally get it. If you tell me to put them back in the cafeteria at tables, that, that's what I'll do, if it's a policy. But I, you know, I, it's one place where.
I think Donny's kids handle it better than the older kids.
I don't know.
I know.
I'm not trying to be.
Donny's kids don't even know what else to expect.
I do.
Some of the underones, but.
But I, I mean, just, again, if I jump in, I mean, I, I think that there is progress being made, and, and I think, and that's just it, as, as I understand, we can't point to where these 11 cases came from. But we've seen over the past two months, am I right, we've moved, we've taken steps, all in one continual direction.
Mm-hmm.
And the steps backward we've taken have been minimal, right?
Right.
I mean, we've talked, we've gone from groups to, back to rows temporarily, not even, not even to rows, but just separate.
That was just that one classroom, though.
That one classroom.
Right, right, right.
So, you know, I like to see things moving forward. My big concern is if we continue to push forward in the face of increasing numbers, that not only are we gonna end up backwards, we're gonna end up at home, and that would be the biggest problem.
And I, and I mean, I'm getting pressure from some people to put the masks back on, you know?
I think the idea is to keep kids in class, and if we continue to have these pods of clusters, those are removing, those are sending kids home. They're, they have to leave class. So I think if what's working is working now, it promotes keeping kids in class and in school.
It has no difference in the cafeteria versus the classroom.
We can, I mean, we could recommend that.
Well, it does, because there's.
It's working.
It's a higher-risk activity because you potentially have, you know, students touching more of their face, there's stuff in their mouth, that if they're talking with their mouth open, or, you know, food in their mouth, that can come out.
Maybe they're sharing stuff with each other, like, I don't know. There's.
It can be higher risk than just.
Like they've never been able to share.
Sitting in, you know, at your desk with your pencil and doing your own thing in potential rows. Like, it is higher risk.
I think, I think the current process that's in place, though, if we don't do anything, is that administration continues down the path to pre-COVID.
Oh, yeah.
Lunchroom behavior or seating.
I think kids have been extraordinary, parents have been awesome, and because we live in a culture right now where it's okay to wear a mask if you have to or you want to, and there's nobody bullying anybody because they're wearing a mask or they're not wearing a mask, you know, if parents are feeling like the numbers are high, like today we're at 11, they're gonna find out on Friday, or we've messaged to those classrooms where we had clusters, if you want your child to wear a mask, have them wear a mask. You know, they've been good about it, I, you know, so I don't wanna say, everybody, let's put a mask back on. I want everyone to be able to make their own decision if they need to wear a mask or wanna wear a mask at this point, at this point.
I think we allow you to make your best judgment calls. You're the principal of the building, and unless the school committee comes up with a policy that says, I'm not picking on you, Austin, but.
No, I don't.
You know, we don't allow eight people at a table. That's entirely up to you, what you deem best for, for your students and your school. Your concern is duly noted.
No, trust me, I wasn't planning on making a policy over here, but.
Right.
Right.
No, but it, it's, you know, again, because, you know, I'm sure, Allison, like all of us here are.
We wanna move forward.
Get it at the supermarket, hear it in this ear, that ear. It's out there. The, you know, whether whoever brought that item forward to us to express out likes the answers or not, at least they have answers. It's, it's how the citizen, one way the citizens can get their concerns heard by the administration in a public setting.
Right. Yeah.
It's all good. Is there anything else under updating COVID restrictions? I don't think so, but.
So is the school open or not?
To the, yeah, it already is. Unofficially, it, it is. We just haven't, we're, we're not gonna issue a press release about it.
I don't.
Well, you still gotta go through the process, get your court and all that stuff, but yes.
Can I just ask, like, what, what does open mean to you, Ms. Johnson? Like, I'm just.
No, that's what I'm just asking. Like, I haven't been allowed to be in the school in two years. I mean, my kids weren't in school last year. I've been allowed to come into the building, to the office, and it's not that I ever before was like always in the building or whatever, but I know there's parents that have never seen the inside of that school building past that office.
Right.
And though I 100% agree with the going to lunch thing, I always thought that was weird, so that's not an issue.
It's nice.
It's nice, but it's weird.
Parents need to know that if they wanna, that the teacher says or wants to suggest that, "Hey, can I come and read a book to my kids' class?" Because I've never seen my kids' teacher in person in their classroom, that they have the option to do that now.
There, there's a, yes, there's a process to do that, so that it, it, right, you can't just knock on the door and go in.
No, I understand.
But yeah, but if they, if they, if they follow the previous.
But you saying that you're not making it public, we're not sending a press release, like, I knew that it was from the last meeting that it was, we're as-is till the 1st.
Yeah.
And then I was like, well, that's great, but the next meeting is way past the 1st, so is the building open on the 1st, or is the building not open until now, when you guys say, "All clear, the building is open minus the lunch thing." Like, I've been trying to help with the chicken thing, and I was snuck into the building to have a meeting.
So there, right. So to that point, I, there's gotta be a way that we can.
And it was after April 1st, so I guess it doesn't count.
So that we could incorporate in one of the communications, probably not the communication going about, out about the 11 positives, unless it's a broader message.
Maybe in the next tiger talk, and we'll talk about lunch no longer.
And a reminder, this is the process to follow, you know, in coordination with the teacher and/or whatever the case may be. Whatever the process was prior to COVID, a reminder, and we could, we could even, because we have talked about this, as folks that have kids in the, you know, if somebody was in pre-k when this all started, they haven't seen the inside of the classroom.
Right. And we're doing kindergarten orientation in, in person, which is the first time in two years, which is great.
Well, so that was a question that I got prior to coming here, was, why is the PTO allowed to have their person, their meeting in person last night?
And they didn't announce it.
And parents weren't allowed, and parents prior, prior to that haven't been allowed in the building, and people are mad. And I'm not saying it from my standpoint, because it is what it is.
Yeah.
But enough is enough. Like, you're never gonna have zero cases, and so at some point, we have to just learn to live.
Yeah.
And let live. So I think.
And we're going there. We dropped the ball on the communication issue.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we end, we adjourn our regular session and that we go into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A, Paragraph 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contractual negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The chair does not anticipate returning to public session. No vote will be taken. No public vote will be made in executive session. As a reminder, executive session requires roll-call votes. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And to clarify, the chair, the chair would like the superintendent to join us in executive session. Seconded, roll-call vote.
Tousoray.
Thank you.
Rogers' eye.
Lumbra, eye.
Raydon, eye.
Maud's, eye.
So moved. Public meeting ends at 8:24.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.